Yes. Yeah, you can start.
Okay, so once again, good evening, all of you. Really excited and thrilled to, you know, be sharing with all of you today. So like my topic is already mentioned, it's Nagland, beyond the falcon capital of the world. I'm sure you, some of you must have heard about the emerald falcons visiting Nagland. But I, I do really feel there's more to the falcons and conservation of falcons in Nagland than we know about. So after I talk about falcons, I'm going to be talking about something else again, and that I believe is very, very important. So that's it, because we're all, you know, still not able to go as freely as we want to. I'm going to take all of you on a tour and. Okay, yeah, so I'm going to just name our tour, the Falcon Tour, because we're going to be talking about falcons. We're going to be looking at some falcons and some pictures. So the first thing I would want to do is, you know, there it is. Let's see where you all are and I'll show you where I am right now. So I believe this is where your university is. The symbiosis international university. And from here, I'm going to take all of you out of your university and we're going to go to Nagland. So just buckle up and we'll just go see where I am. So we're just flying out of your university and here we are in the easternmost corner of the country. And what you're seeing here is a water body, I think you can already figure that out by the shape of it. And this is called the Doyang Reserve or. What then is the reserve worry located in Woka? We're going to be talking a lot about this, what is reserve or SR if my talk progresses. But I just want to show you a little bit more about this place. So first of all, again, welcome to Nagland now. Now you're already in Nagland, you're no more in, you know, wherever you may be. But this is, this is a brief map showing where Nagland is. Like I said, it's the easternmost corner of the country. And that mark there, the red mark that you can see beeping, that's where Woka is and that's where the Doyang Reserve is. So there, there are over sixteen tribes in Nagland and just for your information, it's, it's a small state. It is a small state, but it is very diverse because even though there are sixteen tribes, we do not understand each other. That's how diverse we are in terms of language, in terms of our dialect. So that state, you know, the total square kilometer in the state is sixteen thousand, over slightly over sixteen thousand. As mentioned there, you know, on the PPT you would see Mount Zarmati, that is around three thousand four hundred, eight hundred forty meters, is the highest mountain peak in the state. The lowest plains are about a hundred meters. And here in the map I've mentioned, you would see on the eastern, on the western side, you see Assam. And on the eastern side, you see Myanmar. So it is very interesting because the lower plains are all, you know, towards the western side, towards Assam. And the highest points are towards Myanmar. Uh, now, now that's it, you know, this elevation gradient, the elevation gradient gives an opportunity for different types of forest types. And that's why we have about, at least about nine types of forests in this small state, which also does amplifies the number of species or diversity of wildlife that we find in our state. And yes, like I said, there are many tribes and the tribes in Nagland are very closely linked with nature. And our biodiversity has a lot of importance or significance in our culture and traditions. Just this picture alone, I'm going to show you six different, you know, connections that tribes have with our biodiversity. So please keep your eye on the PPT and check where the points are going to come. But there is the first one, what you see there is the feather of a great hornbill. Then that is the bird of a bear on the headgear. The third one is the task of a wild boar. The fourth one is the claws of bears again. The fifth one is armband usually made of animal bones like elephants. Then the sixth ones are tiger canines. You can see in this one picture itself, in this one tradition, a tie itself actually six different kinds. If I would, if I were to show you about all the tribes, it's going to take a very long time, it's assured. Moving forward, this is the state bird called the Blight Struck Band. It is a threatened species. Then we have a state animal that is the maitune. And of course, I think you'd all know what this is. It's the, it's the Rajamircha, I think people usually identify Nagland or Assam with, you know, this Bhuj Jodhaka, which is, if you see on the right side, you would see that it is one of the spiciest peppers in the world. That's it, I think our tour will not be completed, we will not show you the falcons itself. So keeping everything aside, we're going to dive straight into the falcons. And to start with, I'm going to just try and explain to you what the differences are between the male and female falcons. So this is what a male looks like. And as you see in the description, it's dark gray, it has a rufousy tie and vents. And the female has more of bairings and, you know, it has fighting under parts. So when you fly, this is what a female will look like. And of course, there's one at the back, a nosy one, I would call him. That's a male trying to bombard of the bomb, the, the female there. But this is what falcons look like when they're flying. I'm going to now talk about this spectacle that, you know, I so always, I'm always amused, you know, and in awe of the falcons because when they come, it's, it's, it's quite a phenomenon. So for the spectacle, I'm going to first talk about the great migration itself. Now, if you look at this map, you would see the orange portion towards the north, northeast of India. That's in towards Mongolia and, you know, northern part of China, Siberia as well. So that's where the breeding grounds of the emerald falcons are. And if you look at the lower part, that's highlighted in yellow in the southern part of Africa, that's where the wintering grounds are. Now this distance, one way itself is about eleven thousand kilometers. And you see Nagland is right there marked in red. And what you see in gray is actually their, their migration route. But like I say, one way it takes them about twenty, eleven thousand kilometers. Now these falcons is, they're not very big, so they're about one fifty or one eighty grams. So they're not very big birds, not very big raptors. For them to fly for, for this distance and do it twice a year. That, that is a lot for a bird. Needless to say, now, emerald falcons are one of the longest migratory raptors in the world. They're a true continental, transequatorial, long-distance flocking migrant, as stated in the migrating raptors of the world. Now, what's more interesting again about these birds, besides their very long migration is, if you look at the map again, you would see, you know, from the western coast, that is towards, of course, where you are right now. And to reach Africa, they, they have to cross the Arabian Sea. Now, not, not all birds can do this. It, it, it demands a lot of effort from these tiny birds. They, they have to fly for about four thousand kilometers, overwaters, non-stop, day and night, rain or shine. It is quite a task. And this is why, you know, emerald falcons are very in terms of, you know, having this, the role in, in a lot compared to many other species. And these fly, you know, over the Arabian seas, the greatest by any bird of prey. Now, this, this part where they have to fly over the ocean is very important with regard to Nagland. And I'll be coming back in the later part of the discussion. So now you have seen that, you know, the birds come and stop over at Nagland. Why, why would they come? And this is the only reason. These are flying termites called elite. This is high in protein and especially fat. And for the, for the falcons to fly over that four thousand kilometer that I was just talking about, they need to be, you know, having enough fat reserves. They should build on their fats to be able to fly that non-stop. And that, because that demands a lot of energy, they have to come and stop over, not only in Nagland, but in some other parts of northeast India as well. Build their fat reserves, then proceed. A bird, an individual would stop for about two to three weeks. This, you know, all they do while they come here is fly a little bit around, in and around wherever they're roosting and try to eat as much as they can. It is really important, that is why it is important to protect the stopovers sites in northeast India, especially in Nagland where there are like some really important stopovers sites. Only after they can build their fat reserves can they proceed for their future migration. And again, I'll be coming back to this point a little later, but I'll be going ahead now. So this is what the, you know, emerald falcons look like once they come in Nagland. I'm sure it's not going to be easy to be counting them. And I'm going to, it's, we understand. So that's what, you know, their congregation looks like. I'm not sure if you could hear the sound of this video, was it audible? Because then you would hear the birds chirping actually.
No, Lanzo, we can't hear sound.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, I wish, I really wish you could hear the sound of these birds chirping, you know, in like the thousands and lakhs of them. But I guess that's, you know, an invitation I'm going to give you all from now that you should come and watch this, you know, spectacle for yourself in Nagland someday soon. But moving ahead, you know, if some of you would want to count the falcons, it is right here in front of you. You can start counting while I talk about, you know, this stopover site and why it's important. Just a minute, please. Okay, so the stopover site. As I was mentioning earlier, the Doyang Reserve is built on the river, the largest river in Nagland. And the catchment area is now an important stopover site for falcons. Because of their, you know, exceptional, exceptionally large numbers and their conservation values, Nagland is now tagged as the falcon capital of the world. And these concretions of emerald falcons is known to be the largest anywhere on the planet. That's it, if you're done counting, we'll just move on to the next slide. I'm going to show you again the Doyang Reserve. So, yeah, there, there is a reserve, and I'm just going to take you to where the roosting site is. So where we're looking at now is the actual roosting site of the emerald falcons in Doyang Reserve in Pungti Village. You must, whenever you talk about emerald falcons, I'm sure you would have heard the place called. And we're going to be talking this particular village now. This is what Doyang Reserve looks like, if you were to come and see. And this is another aerial view of the reservoir. And now coming, coming to the story is the good and the bad, and I'm going to start off with the bad. The massacre, two thousand twelve. You know, there was a report by Conservation India that emerald falcons were being killed, harvested in thousands and lakhs. And this report was true. And this is how the raptors were being caught. What you see here is a male emerald falcon entangled in a fishing net. So what, how people were capturing was not by shooting them down, but people were actually putting up nets to capture them. So this film was the fisherman. And it was all by fluke that they learned about how to capture the falcons. So some fishermen were just trying up their nets apparently. And that's when some of the falcons got caught and they knew, okay, maybe you can use these nets to catch more birds and sell them. In the process of time, people put up a lot of nets. And this is how they were, you know, after they were caught in the net, they were removed and put in these kind of places. And of course, collected and transported, you know, wherever people demanded. So as I mentioned, you know, people wrote a lot about this, people, you know, different organizations, different people, government, non-government, like everyone started talking about the, the massacre in two thousand twelve. This was, you know, not, not good, just not just for the state, but for the country as well. But why, why would people do this? I think this is a question that we should not overlook as well and ponder upon. So whenever I was talking about the reserve or being created on the river, about two thousand four hundred hectares of fertile land was being submerged in the process. There was also a problem of erosion in the hills where people were trying to cultivate or do agriculture. And also there was, of course, there are elephants near place, so there were, you know, elephant depredation. There was unemployment problems, there were cases of reduced fish catch and also poor road connectivity. But then I've written something up here, if you notice, I've mentioned manna from heaven. So this is how people considered the falcons. What is interesting is, you know, these falcons, although they were coming since many years back, the numbers by which they were coming only increased after the creation of the dam. So while on one hand, the villagers were losing part of their livelihood in terms of agriculture, they thought, okay, manam, this is manam from heaven, manam basically means God sent food. So that's how people in the villages considered these birds. So they were like, okay, so many birds are starting to come now after this dam. Let's just capture them, it's like a blessing for us that God has sent. And then they started catching as much as they could, they sold them, of course, mostly to meet, to pay for education for the kids and also to save some money for festivals. That is, one is the Dokumon Festival, that's the post-service festival for a lot of tribe and the Christmas Festival. So this was one of the reasons why this was happening. Now, post-two thousand twelve, I mean, everyone was alarmed by this case and some steps had to be taken immediately. And so the road to recovery began immediately. The focus was on four things mostly. One was average creation, then of course there was strict enforcement. Then it was focused on generating, you know, alternate income for the people. And the fourth was ensuring community participation in taking birds. So a lot of, you know, things with late elders, not just Pungti village, but, you know, so many other villages in and around the landscape and involving church, talking to a lot of people, having programs, having campaigns, organizing activities for kids or for anyone who can be part of it, you know. At first we're made basically to reach out to as much people and as quick as possible. So here, you know, we can also see more of these programs in the villages in different parts. And also making it sure, you know, the children, the kids are not left out in the process. Then came the enforcement part. And then came the other tag. If you remember in the beginning of the slide, I've told you that, you know, Nagland was tagged as falcon capital of the world. But another tag also happened along the process of, you know, trying to bring conservation and making people aware of the birds. That was the satellite tagging. If you can see these two birds, they were the first birds to be tagged by this very small GPS unit, there was solar power. And these three birds were also named after the place and people. So this is the male falcon was named as Naga, another female was named as Woka, another female was named as Pungti. Now, what this says, no, it was purely for scientific purpose, of course, to make us, you know, understand the falcons better. But in, in the, in the process, it also became quite a game changer in the conservation efforts that were under play, underway already. Because by naming these birds according to the place and the people, people, you know, in the community started to have a sense of ownership and responsibility towards protecting these birds. It became a matter of pride. And this, you know, became one of the defining moments in the emerald falcon conservation success story in Pungti. So here you can see one of the female, and this happens to be Pungti, being released by the villagers in presence of, of course, some department officials and scientists from WII and Hungary, who were actually part of the emerald falcon tagging process. And, you know, the people, or by this time, already people have, you know, got so much connection to the birds that they even prayed before releasing the bird. And so this is what I would say, you know, that despite the initial setback, the people of Pungti Village led by example to show the kind of conservation success that the community can bring about. And this is really important as, as our talk progresses, I, I hope that, you know, this will become more clear. Now, another thing that the government did was, you know, in two thousand thirteen, during the World Environment Day, the state government declared the emerald falcons as state guests. Now, with all of these efforts, what happened was that in two thousand twelve, we had all of these very negative, unfortunate events happening. And in two thousand thirteen, by the end of the migration period, zero hunting of emerald falcons at Pungti was achieved. The year was declared as a hunting free year. People had literally turned from hunters to protectors in the span of one year. Now, it may be, it may not mean too much for, for some people, but for, for places like Nagland or northeast India, where still, you know, hunting still exists, it was quite a, quite a big task. And of course, this, this now made some very positive news. And if you, if you had seen some of these headlines that have faced it here, you would see that the same person that had, you know, talked about what was going wrong in, in two thousand twelve, those same persons were now writing about something that was going right in Nagland and in India with respect to emerald falcon conservation. So this was definitely the dawn of a new beginning. This was followed by, of course, a lot of awards and recognitions from various bodies, including CMS, which is the Convention of, Convention of Conservation of Migrated Species of Wild Animals, which India is also a partner to, and of course, many other NGOs, government organizations. And I would say that, you know, the recognition still follows to this day, just as we follow our tagged birds. And with this, I come to the next, that is following our tag emerald falcons. What you see here are the track routes, you know, of the three birds that I've been talking about, Pungti, Woka and Naga. The red spot that you can see on the top is Pungti and the other two are Woka and Naga. Now, I'm going to just show you one, one slide again, and this is really important, it really hit me hard. So this is about Pungti. And if you just look towards the top right of my slide, you would see, you know, there's a timeline. So it's showing that, you know, towards the left, it's showing that, you know, Pungti was tagged, GPS tagged in the year two thousand thirteen, on November seventh. And in two thousand sixteen, we're now looking, two thousand sixteen, November, day twelve, starting from day twelve, we're just going to look. So please look at this carefully and it's going to, I hope it means to you as much as it meant to me when I first saw this. So on day twelve, it's just arriving. Well, Nagland, it's already arrived Nagland. Now, it's still in Nagland, it's now moving out and it's crossing over the Arabian Sea. And there it is, it ended there abruptly. And we don't know if, you know, maybe the GPS stopped working or maybe the bird died. But there's high chances the bird didn't make it to land, to, you know, to land that year. Maybe that, you know, over the sea, it could not continue anymore. And it just, maybe it just died. And this is how difficult this, this flight over the ocean is. And this is why there, you know, like I mentioned earlier, there's the, in Nagland and northeast India is so much more important. Because if they really do not, you know, take care of their health, if they really do not, you know, build on their fat reserves and gain the energy that they need for this four thousand kilometer over the water, non-stop flight, there's high chances they will not make it. And this is just one bird that we tagged, I mean, and we got information about. There may be so many other, because they're in the millions and lakhs, there may be so many other birds, you know, that's probably not making it to, to, to their land. They might be just dying over the ocean. So when this thing really hit me hard and I, I just hope, you know, it just invokes a sense of, you know, the need to really protect not just the bird, but its environment as well, its habitat as well. But the good thing is, you know, over the years, again, we've identified more important roosting sites in Nagland itself, other than Woka, you know, where the Doyang Reserve is, we have also found there are five more, you know, places where a lot of major roosting happens as well.
Lanzo, can you tell them what is roosting?
Okay, so sure. So roosting is basically, you know, the birds, they come and they rest. And they usually perch on trees and they just, you know, sleep through the night. So, so that's in, in, in very simple form, that's what roosting is, they come and it's a place for them to rest, yeah? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and see, like I said, because, you know, this, this bird that we first tagged really had a big impact on the people of, of, of the, of the local community. And also it gave us very good data, you know, scientists and researchers were able to understand more about these scriptures. And so they made another effort in two thousand sixteen and tagged six more birds and from different places again. And all of this again was very beneficial to science and also in winning trust and, you know, connection from the people. So, but I want to once also talk about this one bird, if you, if you can see here, the second bird, Longlang, the female. So this female created some record in the sense that, you know, it became the bird that had been tagged for the longest, about one thousand one hundred seventy-six days. That's about three months, three years and eight months. What's interesting is that, you know, remember the, the, the flight over the Arabian Sea? So this particular bird did it seven times. And we're sure it has already done it before we even tagged it. So we know after we tagged it, it had done it seven times. And it had rigged up, you know, about one thousand, sorry, one like fifty-six thousand kilometers of flight over this duration. So these small birds are by no means, you know, as weak as someone might think. So now, that's it. Here, I want to tell you, if anyone's interested, you can definitely log into this site, satellitetracking.eu. And currently, all the birds that I was talking about, they're not active anymore. But there's this one bird that was tagged in Manipur called Irang, I R A N G. This bird is still active, the satellite is still, the satellite tag is still active. And you can track it R by R also if you want to. So it's always, it's already there on the website, anyone's interested, you can definitely go and check out. And I'm just going to show, this is the latest data I have of Irang. And I want, I want to show you again another bird crossing the, sorry, crossing the. For some reason it's not coming. Okay. Now you can see it's crossing, it's through Nagland. And it's crossing the ocean. And this bird safely made it to land. So it left on, you know, it left the western coast on eleventh November, reached the other side on, in Africa on thirteenth November, so basically about three days. So, yeah, so the good thing is, some birds may not make it, majority of them makes it to, to, to land. Now, again, if some of you might want to still count them, it's another opportunity. And in the meantime, I'm just going to, you know, quote a statement made by Rosalie Edge. She was an environmental advocate and founded the first ever preserve for birds of prey. What she said was that the time to protect a species is why it is still common. So many people think, okay, emerald falcons are in such large numbers, you know, their population is not as threatened as we may think. But no, they are. And this is their best time to protect them because if you, if you think about passenger pigeons, you know, their numbers were as mind-bowling as the, the emerald falcons. But, you know, these birds, they need to be together all the time. So when their population declines to an, to an extent where they cannot recover, although there may be still individuals, they may just probably just go extinct. And so it's very, very important to protect them, even though we think they're in good numbers now, it's still very, very important to keep continuing, to continue protecting these birds. So now, yeah, so, yeah, now again, this, if you see, it's the roosting site I showed you earlier, where they come and rest at nights, yeah? But something happened last year. The birds decided to shift their roosting set a little bit. This is in Pungti, what we're looking now. And we're just going to fly maybe some three, four kilometer aerial distance and go to this place. So I want you to look at this very carefully. So this landmass that begins protruding out from about one o'clock, coming towards the middle. This I want you to remember because we're going to be talking about this. Now, this is the neighboring village of Pungti, it's called Ariol Village. And this is what it would look like. So I'm still focusing on that landmass there. So I'm still focusing on that landmass there. And this is what it looks like in real. Now, uh what I want to talk about is, if you remember the landmass, look at your three o'clock, you would see a small patch of forest that's whitish in color. If you notice the trees, I'm not sure the internet is gonna be clear enough for you to notice it, but I hope you do. I'll be talking about that again, but before that, what you see here, you will see very less trees and a lot of tall grasses. These grasses are somewhere between nine, ten feet tall. So what happened was all this while we always, at least uh with regard to Nagland, we've always uh thought about, you know, birds, these emerald falcons just uh perching on trees and just resting on trees, roosting on trees. Now, in this new uh place that they were, uh that picked up last year, they were actually perching even on these grasses, it was something very new to me. Probably they do it when they go to Southern Africa, but we had never seen anything like this uh before. So it does bring interesting that, you know, they chose this new place, which is also very uh remote and have very less human disturbance. So this bird has scattered all over this place and make, you know, uh because you 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 put your binoculars on and look at this point where the grass is and you would see like, you know, we think there are just flowers now over all of these grasses because it is only uh emerald falcons perching on these grasses. But on the right side that I talked about, if uh this small forest patch, I want to tell you something about this. So if you look at this, the white patches, this is what it actually looks like inside. But this is after the falcons had left, you know, last year. The the birds, you know, because they come in thousands and lacks and they they just perch in this roost in this one particular area. By the time they leave, this is what they do with your poo, you know, it's like all white in color. It's as if they painted the entire landscape. So I think it's 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 interesting itself. So this is the latest, uh you know, uh uh video I wanna show you. This is last uh migration season, last fall migration. So this was taken on the uh seventeen November. Sometimes I think, you know, it's easier to count stars because stars without move at least. But yeah, their numbers are very big, but you know, what I think is that, you know, as spectacular as these emerald falcons are, they are very mysterious. Why I say this is because, like I mentioned, this video was taken on seventeen November. By eighteen or nineteen November, it was as if there were no birds here. And over the years, we've been observing that, you know, maybe that's just their behavior. You know, one fine day, you just wake up, you're camping near the falcons, you're just trying to, you monitor uh their their migration, just trying to protect them and you wake up one fine morning and then you don't see the birds anymore. Maybe there are just a few flying here and there, but then the larger flock is nowhere to be seen. And that's mostly, I think, because um we know that they come in batches, they don't come at one go and they leave in batches as well. But when they leave, uh it's a big uh flock that leaves that makes a big gap, you know? So by by date nineteen and twenty, the flock, the falcons have reduced so much that, you know, that's very difficult to start seeing them anymore. But I think there's so much that we still need to know about uh this species. And uh in the same way, I I think, you know, by this time, I I think there are some birds still hanging around near near your campus and other areas. And I think especially not Lo Navella, I think I keep seeing some updates from there, people see a lot of falcons there. It's like this image sent by one of my friend Kenneth. It's it's really lovely with the flowers there. I really hope that you can also go see these falcons, but just be very careful not to go too close to them. I think that's why there has been some restrictions in Lo Navella. But yes, I do hope you can see uh the the guests, our guests who had just left Nagland and are now uh in your place. But this is the uh the core of what I want to be talking about, what's beyond, what what is beyond this? What is, you know, why, why, why are we talking about this emerald falcon conservation? Why are we talking about these success stories? There must be something that's, you know, driving these people, right? And that is something I want to focus on today, that's something I want to ponder on and I want our uh focus to go in that in that direction now. So I'm just gonna rewind again, like I said, there's so many tribes, so many uh culture, then the different forest types and which also means different uh lot more biodiversity. But something I didn't mention earlier, uh I'll be coming to that is, when you look at this forest, like this is so an example of the lowlands uh towards Assam. And you can see that, you know, the mountains are starting. And then if you go towards the eastern side, uh towards Myanmar, then this is what the forest looks like and that's Mount Sarmati at the back. So all of these forests, you know, they're actually owned by the communities. In Nagland, only about twelve percent of the forest area is in the direct control of the forest department or the government. The rest, about eighty-eight percent, belongs to communities or are privately owned. So now this is important because, you know, for lasting conserv- conservation to happen in places like Nagland and other northern states, the need for the participation of the local committee is key, that's what I I really believe in. In places where community themselves come forward, conservation has largely succeeded. And the need for conservation has to come from within the community. I agree that, you know, there has to be some level of en- uh enforcement as well, but it has to come from within. And this is why I really want to put our focus towards community-based conservation because that's what's happening here. This is why it's really important for me personally to, you know, try and talk as much as I can to local communities, to local people, inform them about what they have, you know, make them aware about what they might be losing or what might extinct in their place if they're not careful. And involve them and ensure their participation in conservation. Unless this happens, it's gonna be uh, you know, always a failed effort, that's what I feel. So uh for sure, you know, you know, community-based conservation itself has uh some of its own challenges. But literally, we're just walking into people's property, telling them to conserve, protect whatever they have. It can be quite uh challenging sometimes, but the good thing is, there are already many villages who are protecting their forests, their wildlife, their biodiversity. They're initiating themselves and managing it themselves. But that's, that's a good thing. In fact, you know, uh there are four hundred seven community conserve areas already in place in the state. In doing so, these people are not just, you know, these communities are not just uh protecting their biodiversity, they're also preserving their culture and traditions. This I say because, you know, the the culture and traditions of the Naga tribes being so closely interwoven, so so closely linked with nature, losing our biodiversity would mean losing a part of our identity and that is something I don't think anybody can afford. I just want to give you some more examples of these community conserve areas and this uh community-based conservation that's uh happening uh in in Nagland. This landscape here, mentioned here, is the Fakim Sarmati uh landscape. And I'm just gonna let this fly out of, you know, Doyang again and go towards uh the eastern side, uh near Myanmar. So here we are now about three and a kilometers away. And what you see here, the the barren area towards the bottom of the screen is the top of Mount Sarmati. So, you know, because it's such high elevation, right now, there's no uh there, it, you know, there are no trees there, there are some very short uh plants there. But what's interesting is, you know, this one, this is the forest around it. And this is what I'm talking about, these are all committee, community lands, community forest. And some of you might have seen uh this image of this cloud leopard that's been doing rounds lately. So uh it is one of the highest recorded uh cloud leopard in terms of elevation, three thousand seven hundred meters. Uh one of the highest records in Nagland, in India, in in India, in our country. And this was a part of a study undertaken by Nair all two thousand twenty-one. And they had been working in this Tanami landscape, uh that is, uh sorry, in Tanami village, that is the Fakim uh Sarmati landscape. And they had recorded this cloud leopard. So uh that's as I was saying, you know, how important it is to get the local communities involved. This this team by Nair at all, uh Nair have been uh very actively involving the local communities in their efforts and that is something I really, really appreciate because you may do research and go, but you know, unless there's some continuity because when you leave, if the people are not interested anymore, then comes, you know, conservation gone for a toss. Things may be good, but there may be no conservation aspect. So it's very important to always involve uh local communities and I'm so grateful that this team from, you know, WPSI has been doing work collaboratively with the village in Tanami. So this is one example and, you know, likewise, there's some other examples, so just very quickly, mention two other uh community-based conservation efforts uh that's going very well in Nagland. And one is the Young Young Yum Chen uh Committee Biodiversity Conservation Area. You know, it was initiated by Nuklepon and this effort is now credited to about uh ten fifty households, uh basically from three villages. That's uh Young Yum Chen, Sang Lu and Al Young. Uh they're conserving about ten square kilometer of forest and this has started since two thousand ten. So they have, uh I just want to mention, you know, that they're doing so well that, you know, uh emerald falcons have also been roosting in this area uh in quite large numbers, uh that's like in Pungti and Ariol. And they were also recently uh awarded the the Whitley Award, which is also called the Green Oscar. Continue their efforts towards emerald falcon conservation and also uh protecting their ten square kilometer uh landscape. The other one is the CCO, the three villages Sukai, Kiviku and Lukis. But these are also, you know, all neighboring villages, they've all come together to protect one landscape. And uh right now, they are protecting about nine hundred thirty-nine hectares of land and out of which, you know, this small land itself, they've already recorded so far about two hundred twenty-two species of birds and about two hundred species of butterflies. So I think these are very encouraging uh efforts that, you know, these local communities are doing on their own. And again, so I think we're using the same picture uh for the backgrounds and this is, you know, the kind of forest I'm talking about, like what we can do when people, the committees themselves, protect their own environment. Like I said, this forest that we're seeing here uh belongs to the village of Tanami, it's in the Sarmati landscape. And so also this forest, you know, why, why it's important is because, you know, you you never know what what this uh forest are gonna hold the biodiversity that they support, you know, or the other ecosystem services that they provide, you know? So I'm just gonna show you some pictures, like maybe uh this yellow-tailed marten that's giving a death stare or this colossal elephant or these noisy dogs, uh wild dogs going about with their businesses. Or this palace squirrel playing to play peek-a-boo with, you know, with anyone maybe. And this romantic pair of uh the threatened uh uh what is it, great peacock pheasant, sorry? Then, of course, this this horned frog with some really crazy eyes or this barking deer that's really curious to know who's watching or the dancing emerald falcons, you know? All of this, they are important because they all come in community lands, they all come in community forests and that's why community-based conservation is really, really important. In conclusion, this is what I want to say, you know, about a decade ago, some local communities in Nagland came forward to protect the magnificent emerald falcons in what, yeah, in what would become one of the greatest conservation success stories in modern era. Like the emerald falcons, you know, conservation efforts led uh by the village of Pungti, we know now, you know, that many other villages have been protecting many other species, not just emerald falcons, by means of protecting their forests, some even prior to the uh falcon story. And why these communities do what they do, maybe for many reasons, you know? But one thing is for sure, that their community-based conservation efforts are an inspiration for this small state and also beyond. And I think this is, you know, to me, the actual video of Nagland that, you know, you still, no matter what negativity may be around, you still try and do what you can to protect your biodiversity. So what these companies are doing is basically, you know, joining hands to protect your own backyard. And this is what I want to encourage all of us, this is this challenge that, you know, I believe we can replicate this anywhere, anytime. And maybe we should start it at home because because we can. And I know, I I can assure you that, you know, someone's going to be very, very disappointed if we don't. And he's just gonna be watching all all of us, like, you know, really disappointed. So this is what I'm gonna challenge all of us and, you know, uh I'm really grateful that, you know, such uh enthusiastic group people, students have joined today. And I'm just gonna tell you to, you know, stay curious because you don't know what what your, what your garden outside may hold, you don't know what your forest around your neighborhood may hold. This is something I have taken a picture of here and I just want to tell you that this was this outside where I stayed in in the garden and it was, it was quite a lovely thing to capture and if anybody wants to, you know, guess what it could be, I mean, you could try, I'll tell you what this is at the at the end. So I think with this, uh of course, this are some of the references of today's presentation and with this, you know, I'll just end my talk today. Thank you very much.
Wow, I feel so illuminated after knowing all the facts, like the elevation gradient which affects the species and the forest and what the armband of the tribes are made of, their fur caps. And also like tagging of GPS in falcons, which was a game changer in the conservation. The most interesting part was the one thousand one hundred seventy-six kilometer flight that long length took from the Arabian Sea for seven times. It was amazing and all the great initiatives about community conservation. For until today, for me, birds were only of three types, crows, sparrows and pigeons, but not anymore. There is beauty all around us and now I shall look to it for everywhere I go. The audience, if you have any questions, you can put that in the chat box and we already have two questions. The first one is, have there ever been any instances where the population of any particular bird have been dangerously reduced?
Yes, uh like I mentioned, the passenger pigeon, it's now extinct unfortunately. And at one point, the numbers were, I think, even more than what we see in the emerald falcons. And people hunted the uh them so much that, you know, they could not recover anymore. So that is a very, very good example of the passenger pigeon.
The second question is, any effect on of climate change in the migration of emerald falcons?
So over the years, you know, in these past five, six years that I've been observing, uh we do notice that, you know, uh the falcons are slightly delaying uh their arrival, maybe just for a few days. But, you know, I think, starting from, you know, five, six years ago, I would remember they would come by, you know, maybe first big of October, but now they're coming towards mid of October. So uh it has to be, of course, we have to really study a lot on it, but I'm very sure, you know, it's having some impact on their migration, especially the winds, because they need the winds, you know, uh help them as well the thermals. And of course, the rains uh definitely plays a role in their migration.
The third question is, could you please share the website where we can view the live location of the emerald falcons?
Yeah, definitely, so that is, yeah, yeah, satellite, someone's just mentioned, yeah, satellite tracking dot EU, yeah, that's the one, that's the one.
Any effort on protecting the food source of falcons, the termites?
So right now, we have not really worked uh directly on termites, uh because, you know, these termites uh they are not the normal termites that you would see where they make these termite mounds. So the most or more, most of the species that we find in Nagland are ground-dwelling. So like they just stay, they're subterranean, they do not come, they do not make mounds. So they emerge from literally anywhere when it's time for them to emerge. So you cannot predict where they are, so it's very, very difficult to protect the termites. But of course, that is a very good question, that's something I always think about, you know, as long as we can secure their their uh their their prey, which is a termite, I think it'll be great.
Someone is asking for more types of forest in Nagaland.
Uh more types of forest, I can actually read it out uh some of the types here, but it's gonna be very, you know, uh technical, so I'm not sure if everyone's gonna enjoy, but I'm very, you know, I'll not go exactly as per the classification. But I'll very briefly tell you like the kind of forest we have. Uh so one is the uh tropical forest, basically three, so tropical forest, this is forest and subtropical forest. And again, these two are divided into various kinds. Uh there will be uh the, I'll just read it out to you, the tropical wet evergreen forest. Then we have the uh scrub forest, then we also have the uh semi-evergreen forest, then bamboo bricks. We also have the uh moi, this forest. And we have the subtropical wet uh hill forest. We also have the Asam subtropical pine forest and the Naga hill wet temperate forest, along with the mountain uh mountain bamboo for uh bricks. If anybody needs this information, I can definitely share some uh materials with you all as well. Yeah.
So Lance, can you tell us, uh you said that just last year, you observed that they are uh roosting on in the grassland, that is very new for you and it is very isolated area. So uh what is your uh further uh conclusion or something to look forward for a future plan? Why they are there or anything? Why they are there or anything, anything about that?
Actually, that's a very good question. And so even, this is something we have just noticed, where you have to get some very concrete findings. But very briefly, what we know is that, you know, in the previous roosting site, there were some human disturbances, not necessarily directly other birds, but some, you know, development activities were happening, because you've seen the pictures, it's a beautiful place there. And people are trying to develop that place. So I think those anthropogenic pressures are having some impact on these birds. And that's why they shifted to a place where it's like lesser disturb or lesser anthropogenic activity is going on. And actually, that is why I was also telling you, like, you know, to, if you go to see the birds in Lo Navella or somewhere nearby, just be sure you do not disturb them, because there are high chances they would move. If they have moved in a very major roosting site in Nagland, they would probably, you know, not mind moving elsewhere as well. We don't know if they'll come back, if they'll continue this plan, but for now, that's what happened last year.
Yeah, okay, thanks. So students, you can even unmute yourself and ask questions.
So I have a question. Although it is very tremendous that how Naga, Bokha and Panki were tagged with GPS and how it became a very game-changing and a matter of pride in conservation of Amur falcons. But isn't it painful, like, do we tag the GPS inside them or on them, the process like?
Okay, so can you see my presentation? I'm just gonna go back again, I want to show you some images.
Yeah, meantime, when he's going back to his presentation, we have given a feedback link in the chat box. So while you are in the middle of question answers, please go and just, it will take one minute and fill up feedback form, it will help us for future sessions, please do that.
Okay, so, okay, I think you can see this images now. So you can, you can look at long length, the second bird, or maybe even palm, the first bird. You would see that the tag is a small unit with a long antenna, right? So this is actually put, you know, strapped on their back and there's nothing inside. So it's like they're carrying a small backpack, it's very light, so it does not cause any trouble to these birds. So it's well-designed and they're very, very light, like I said. So there's no trouble for the birds and they just have like a backpack.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for such an enlightening and entertaining presentation. We owe you a special vote of thanks for taking time from your busy schedule to be the guest speaker at our session and making it a huge success. Your presence and wise words help magnify our cause in the best possible way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, thanks Sparkle for this vote of thanks also. But I think even we can have, we have time. So if anyone wants to ask question, they can unmute or they can write in the chat box. We have five more minutes. So Sparkle is completely, she is with going on time. So good job, but still, if anyone wants to ask, otherwise I have one question. So Lanzo, in the process of conservation of this particular bird, Amur falcon, did it help to conserve in the process, other animals also, something like, anything happened?
That one was okay.
Yes? Can you hear me? I think we have lost him. Just, we'll just wait for a moment. We'll just wait for a few minutes, let him join again, because I think he has lost connection. Meantime, those who are here, can you open your videos for just few seconds? We can take one group photo and yes, yeah, Lanzo, we had lost you, I think, for a few seconds. Hi Swati, good to see you.
I love you.
Yeah, so can you open your videos just for a few minutes? Yes, Lanzo, did you hear my question? You are on mute.
Okay, am I?
Yeah, you are audible now.
Yeah, I was, I was saying to you, you know, it is having some impact even for the conservation of other species. So some villages have also given up the use of air guns, you know? These modern weapons are causing havoc to all of these, especially the birds, because they're like, their, their kill percentage is very high when they use air guns. So some villages have given up totally or banned use of air guns. So by doing so, you know, like more species of birds or other animals have been protected. And it's something we had worked as well.
Okay, great. One more last, one more thing, there are so many always things which I always wanted to talk with the speakers. But one thing I want to mention, when you mentioned about the community and how they started looking at Amur falcons after the dam got constructed. And that's how the process of hunting started, right? You said that some, God had sent something for us, because their land has gone under the dam, which was their first otherwise, you know, livelihood. So, you know, and so we never got this information from anywhere. So I think this is, for the first time, I'm listening from the person who is from that land directly. Because I had seen many, you know, videos and even read some articles. This particular mention that how community is looking at them and why they turned to Amur falcons, maybe, maybe one of the cause to hunt them, but still, good you mentioned that. And how the community itself came forward to protect these birds and other biodiversity. So it's really nice to have someone from the land who has, you know, has been doing a fantastic work and listened this story from firsthand. So fantastic, thank you very much. So I guess, yeah, we have come to an end. Sparkle has already given vote of thanks. Thank you very much, Lanzo, and we will definitely get you on board for some other inputs. And you also, please knock on our door if you want to get something out of students or anything, any help from student community. We are really, means we will be there and ready to help. So thank you. Yeah, thanks. Have a nice day, all of you. Thanks, thank, thank you everyone for turning up on a Sunday afternoon. Good to see your faces. Hi Tanvi.
Hello ma'am, nice to see you, nice session, thank you so much.
Yeah, so see you on next Sunday on another interesting session. Bye, see you, bye, have a nice day, all of you. So team, good job.